All this meeting to order. If I could ask you to all rise and say the pledge of allegiance. I can ask Mr. Kylie to lead us in the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up are the minutes to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting September 11th, 2013. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Alright, I'm looking at my packet and these are entitled August 21st. Do we have the September 11th minutes? Are your packets the same as mine?
Yes, it is.
I looked at mine online, so.
Alright, since the actual minutes aren't here, I'd entertain a motion to postpone.
Second.
Alright, I'll make a motion to postpone.
Second.
Any discussion on the postponement of the approval of those minutes? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, you've got that down for the, alright. Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting of October 9th, 2013. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. So moved, alright. Any discussion or edits to the minutes? Kristin?
Yes, in terms of others present, if we could add Attorney Rick Aiken to that as well, under item number seven, which was the bike and pedestrian, here we go, in, it's actually on page two, the beginning of page two and the end, end of page, the first page and the beginning of page two, to delete the words regulation fees, actually it's really the word fees with changes. There are not fees being proposed, they are changes, the regulation changes. So we can make that change, that's my motion.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alright, is there a second for those changes?
Second, Doc.
Alright, any discussion on the changes and the changes only? You okay with this?
Yep.
Alright, all in favor of approving the amendment to the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Alright, the minutes as amended are before us, any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item four on our agenda, from the Director of Community and Economic Development, and this will require Board of Finance and RTM approval, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Community and Economic Development. Resolve that Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman B. and hereby is, authorized to sign a town commitment letter supporting a transportation enhancement project titled Commerce Drive, Kings Highway Station Area Enhancement Project, utilizing 80% reimbursable federal funds and a project grant under the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, which requires a 20% local match, the total cost of the entire grant being up to $1.2 million, of which up to $240,000 would be the town matching share. Further resolve that the First Selectman is authorized to execute, on behalf of the Town of Fairfield, any and all necessary documents and agreements to secure such grant, and further resolve that the First Selectman B. and hereby is authorized to start the initial design phase up to $200,000, of which up to $40,000 is the town share. Further resolve that the First Selectman B. and hereby is authorized to accept and expend the full amount of the grant up to 1.2 million with the town share of this project to be funded from the non-recurring capital account. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Alright, Mr. Barnhart, do you have a presentation to give us on?
I will start, joined by Bill Burley, Town Engineer. We've been working on this project for a number of years now. We would ask for your support for this project. It's been many years in the making. We're proposing to make pedestrian streetscape enhancements to the Kings Highway area. The project's scope would be tentatively Kings Highway, running from the Chamber Street intersection to at least the Brentwood Avenue intersection and possibly beyond, depending on how the project lays out. We would seek funding under the Transportation Alternatives Program, which requires a 20% local match requirement for both design and construction phases. This is part of the regional transportation improvement plan, so there are funds set aside for this purpose. As I've indicated, we've been seeking funding for this project for probably five, six years now, and so we now are in a position to actually access some grant funds for this purpose. It is part of the, I wasn't privy or did not attend the capital planning workshop, but I understand from conversations with Mr. Mayor and the Director of Public Works, that this was a project that was incorporated and is reflected on the capital plan, the waterfall schedule. It's noted, we have a million dollars for capital construction and $200,000 for design, which we would hope to initiate upon your approval and once we get through the grant process shortly. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions, and I don't know, Bill, did you want to talk further about the schedule or?
Yeah, can pass out the workable schedule?
In conversations with Mr. Mayor, we note that it does show up both the design and construction phase for 2014, 2015. We would propose to make some revisions to that so we can initiate design and get that started earlier with constructions to follow. And there does appear to be, you know, some need to make further revisions because on the expenditure line down below, I only see the million dollars for construction, I don't see the design piece noted there. I do see the reimbursement anticipated coming back in, in 2015, 2016 of 800,000, but again, there's no reflection of the design phase. So again, we met with Mr. Mayor yesterday and he indicated he would need to make those minor revisions to the waterfall schedule, but he would want to do that.
Is Mr. Mayor going to join us? Jen, is he coming down?
Yeah, if you think it's necessary, we can call. He said he would be available if needed.
Just because I'm sure there'll be questions on that, at least I have a few on the schedule. Could you just review, you handed out a sheet here, focused by Mike, just review this timeline for, this is for overall timing of the project.
Right, assuming that the commitment letter and the resolution gets passed, that would be November and December of 2013 this year. After a couple agreements are assigned and the state gives us to go ahead to do what they call, you know, an RFQ for a consultant designer, that would occur in January and February 2014. The design phase would begin April 2014. It can run anywhere from six to nine months, so I have a design completion date of October 2014 to January 2015. From there, by the time the final agreements get in place and the project goes out to bid, construction would probably start late March 2015 and run hopefully through the construction season. We're figuring about seven or eight months for the project. I did have a caveat in here, if, and again, sometimes you never know if the state or the project gets hung up for any reason, there's utility work that gets, you know, the project delayed because of the construction season there, depending on the work involved. The asphalt plants, for instance, are closed during the winter, so unfortunately, if it's one or two month delay, sometimes that means the project actually gets delayed four or five months until the asphalt plants, you know, reopen or something like that. So that's why I just have a caveat in there that it is possible the project could get pushed until June 2016. But ideally, if everything went through, and I think there's at least a couple of month cushion, we could have the construction start in late March, then that would, I'd have to believe we could get it done in one construction season. So that would be ideally to keep, try to keep the schedule.
Okay, and those dates are the ones that you handed out on the?
That's correct.
Here. You mentioned asphalt. It seems in the project here that its components are concrete sidewalks, concrete curbs, ADA compliant handicap ramps, investigate bicycle routes, install additional bicycle amenities as bike racks, signs and bike parking. Also included some median improvements to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. Where would the asphalt come in?
Well, the asphalt would be is when you cut for the concrete curb, you'd have to provide an asphalt patch. The pavement, I was just using asphalt as a general term, that, I mean, again, concrete work you can do sometimes in the winter, if it's 25 degrees or so, you can, you know, put blankets over, et cetera. But if it gets into a deep freeze, same thing goes with concrete pavement markings, you don't want to do any of the pavement markings unless the temperature is like 45 degrees and above. So I just used asphalt as a quick reference, but it's asphalt and other construction materials.
So basically, the project, to kind of simplify the description, is sidewalks and median along Kings Highway, from what street to what street?
Well, again, a lot of it will depend on the, how much the funding will really take us. We're figuring at a minimum it should be Chamber Street to Brentwood. We're hoping to go at least beyond Berwick, and then if there's still funding available, basically, we'll have the choice of going, continuing a little bit more on Kings Highway or using a little bit of the money on Chamber Street. For bike amenities, the very preliminary cost estimate had some bike amenities in there, and as we were saying before, the signs and pavement markings, they may also include some bike racks and some other amenities as you get closer to the station as well.
Okay, is that consistent with the bike pedestrian plan that's been put together for this area?
Most certainly is, yes.
Okay, alright. I just want to clarify a few things.
No, go ahead.
Open it up to other questions, if you guys would like.
Sure.
Either one? Kristin?
I think Mark wanted to.
Two other things I didn't mention in my opening remarks. One is that we did have a public hearing on June 27th to gauge community support for the project. We did have a fairly good turnout, given the schedule, the time of the year. We had over 25 people, I think, in the room and everyone expressed support for the project. In fact, they wanted us to go, I think, a step beyond what we were proposing, to expand the project's scope. The other thing I wanted to mention is that with regard to the design phase, this would be potentially eligible to be funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program. It is in a CDVG eligible census tract.
The entire design phase or the town matching portion?
The town matching portion. And we did check with the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council and they confirmed that we could use CDVG funds as the non-federal match because it's not transportation money. So we were able to ascertain that we do have those funds available and that would be one way to jumpstart the project.
With the limits on some of the community block grant money that's coming to the town, would that impact other projects or other initiatives that you plan to use that money for?
We currently have some funds that we've accumulated from other projects that have finished under budget or have been canceled, and so we will be able to reprogram those funds without taking away from other projects we've already committed to.
Okay, good, thank you. Back, Kristin?
Just a couple comments. I'm absolutely thrilled to see this project on the agenda. I was there at the meeting on June 27th, which I think the turnout was phenomenal because it was right at the end of the school year and there were, there was a nice cross-section of folks who were at that meeting as well, from senior citizens to younger people, parents with children, so that was very heartening to see. One of the conversations I remember from that night was a conversation about greenery and trees along there, and again, the budgetary considerations. So what my question is today is, as you go forward with the design phase, how will you incorporate some of those comments? The public meeting I'm thinking about, but also certainly Bill and I have been sitting together often with the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, will there be a way to continue that conversation through the design phase?
Yes, there will be, although in terms of greenery, again, depending on what we choose to do with the median, it is on a state road, so obviously whatever we choose to do there, the state will have a major say in that as well. But in walking the site, we are limited on the right-of-way. Right after the curb, we probably only have five or six feet beyond that curb as right-of-way. So, you know, to do an expansive green strip or plants, you know, planting of the trees, it's going to be difficult in this particular area because the limited right-of-way and we do have to meet the handicap accessibility, so off the top of my head, I would think we'd need at least a minimum of five feet for the sidewalk, so that doesn't give us too much room to play with. However, there are some programs that sometimes the DPW, you know, has a street planting, street tree planting program, or if we kind of have, we've done it where we have a tight right-of-way, where if we get the abutters to, you know, we can plant a tree if they agree to maintain it, or if it's just beyond the property line, it acts like a street tree, but they maintain it. And some businesses, mainly we're at businesses, there are some residents in that area, but it's mainly business and the commercial areas do go for that. So anybody that would be willing to do that, we could do that as well. At these typical grant meetings, we already had one of the public information, and that was even a pre-meeting, just to really gauge the interest. Obviously, in these economic times, there is a town share and we wanted to make sure there was a community support for the project. But when we're at the 30% design phase or preliminary design phase, there will be another public information meeting where they can, before we do the final design, they can have some input, some tweaking, and then find out exactly what's, you know, going to be proposed, what areas, how far we will go, and probably even a revised, you know, cost estimate as well, updated cost estimate to further define the project. So there will be at least one more opportunity for the public to anticipate, and as always, anybody's always invited to contact Mark or myself, or through even the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, if they choose to do so, and we'll come back to us and we'll have major input with the design as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. This project is, you know, it's a good project and it's something that we should be looking at doing. A couple questions. Since it appears to be a little open-ended at this point in time, you know, you might go from this street to that street, can you talk, can you talk a little bit about your priorities? You know, what's, what do you have to do first? What do you have to do second? What do you want to get done, if you can get done, and how you're choosing the components that you're doing first? And in conjunction with that, even though you haven't gotten to that 30% stage yet of design or any stage of design, is there any preliminary, even if it's rough, kind of a map or a layout that would show, we're thinking about doing this here, we'd like to do that there? I just haven't seen anything that gives me just, you know, in broad strokes, what we're thinking about doing and where, in what order, before we go to design?
Whether our application has a circle or an oval, you know, around?
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my arms around because, and my follow-up to that will be, you know, since there's a larger, bigger picture at play here as well, what might that look like, you know, beyond and above what this project gets, you know, completed?
I think the initial impetus for the project was twofold. There was concerns about beautification of the Kings Highway corridor, but all, and connections to the new Fairfield Metro Center Station.
Right.
And how we would provide that connectivity for people that walk or people that bike to the new station. So those were the two concerns. One is to kind of beautify that area, respond to concerns from residents and businesses there, as well as to provide greater connectivity to the new station. I think in conversations with Town Engineer and the Public Works Director, our priority is really focused on Kings Highway, primarily because being a state highway, we're required to, when we do improvements to it, to have more rigorous design standards and construction standards. So in our view, using federal funds for that purpose, we would have more bang for the buck, as opposed to concentrating on local streets whereby we might not necessarily provide, but a lower design standard and lower costs associated with that. Still using good construction practices, of course, but we wouldn't necessarily have to provide for the full-time inspection and all the paperwork requirements associated with a federal grant. And so we think it would make more sense to focus on Kings Highway and take it as far as we can, starting at Chamber Street, going to at least Brentwood, hopefully beyond, and then as a secondary priority, look at those connections from Kings Highway to Commerce Drive.
Right.
And perhaps as a subsequent second phase, use local funds for that purpose. Because certainly those areas, Brentwood Avenue in particular, could use some improvements in terms of the sidewalk that we saw there.
On the streets themselves.
On Brentwood itself, yes.
Definitely. Yeah, because I work over there and I would concur with everything you just said about the access and the need and our abilities to link those two areas for walkers, for bikers, and even make it safer for cars.
Yep.
So there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done.
So I filibustered enough so that Mr. Burley can come with a full map.
You did a great job, too.
This is helpful.
Yeah, just wanted to kind of visualize a little.
These are the same maps that you had available.
Yeah, basically, you know, when you mentioned the public hearing, I'm like, geez, we have these. Forgive me, I just think everybody in town knows the street and the area that we're talking about. But essentially, for those who don't know, Chamber Street is in the Miller dealership area there, and Kings Highway East, the sidewalks run on both sides to Brentwood, which is this road here. So you have this section right in here that would be covered, there's the medians that we were talking about there, and then hopefully we can go a little bit further to Berwick or maybe even to Fairchild if need be. The train station's down this area here, and even, you know, grant aside, we are trying to do other improvements when possible. We did, when the train station was built and the rotary was redone, there was no way to cross Route 1. The town had worked out an agreement with the state, we don't have the forces to do the traffic signal work, so we had worked out an agreement with the state where they would provide pedestrian signal at the, right in front of the Lexus area and Kings Highway East Number 2, they call it, and Kings Highway cutoff, where they would provide the electrical services that, as long as the town did the handicap ramps. So DPW was able to do the handicap ramps, basically in a day or two worth of time to do that, so now we have a full-fledged crossing in that area. There is a development being proposed by Lexus with an addition, and one of the requirements through zoning regulations and with engineering and public work comment, an agreement that they're going to improve the sidewalks along their frontage. So, you know, when you start getting some of those business improvements as well, it starts to fill in the picture. And so that's our goal, is to get people who live in this area to go down, to walk to the train station, these people here also the same. And then there's, I believe, a couple of churches in the area, and Mark alluded to some businesses, I know there's a couple of delis and markets in the area as well. And we didn't even talk about the potential, I'm not exactly sure where they stand, but I believe there's affordable housing or some apartment or condo or complexes off of Fairchild as well, and one would think that there's certainly a potential for a lot of pedestrian activity in those areas. So the timing, you know, between those projects and having the train station for this area, I think is pretty good, so.
Quickly, how many blocks in between Chambers and Brentwood? I just can't see it from here.
Yeah, sure. We have one, two, it'd be three full blocks, and we're hoping maybe to do four, five.
Okay, and the work you're proposing is on both sides of the ride?
Right, yeah, both sides.
It's on the Firestone side of the street and the Marcellus down the side of the road, is what you're saying?
Correct.
I'm just trying to place it.
That's what I do, too.
The landmarks, right? Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
Sure.
And if you had the money to do all that Kings Highway work, where would you go next? What would you do next? I mean, what else, what's next on the priority list as far as that area, pedestrian, bikes, safety, things like that?
Speaking solely from concerns that I've heard, and from an aesthetic standpoint as well as pedestrian safety, to some extent, I think I've heard a lot of comments in terms of improving the entire breadth of Kings Highway to the Bridgeport line, if we could at some point, to take that, you know, as far as we can. So part of it is to, once we have a kind of a design motif, we could extend that as funding becomes available in the future.
Yeah, I think we would go eastward. One of the benefits is we'd go to, say, the Board of Ed or the, I think it was the Fischel Building there. Now, that was recently done, those sidewalks, so we could skip that area.
It's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I think that's Brentwood down, isn't it?
A little bit beyond, yeah. Nathan Hale Street or one of those.
It does get rough there.
Yeah, then, then again, by the old car dealership around the curve and Villa Avenue area there, some of that is a little dated, and then we work our way over. But again, with this type of project, long-term, and maybe we should after this one, put it on the next waterfall schedule of, you know, possibly expanding that in a Phase 2 or Phase 3, and although the grants usually tend to be competitive, if, we've had at least initial discussions that if we were to get more grant money in the future, we would extend that way. At the public hearing, Castle Avenue was a bit of a surprise to us, that there were about five or six residents that expressed interest in Castle Avenue and Berwick and Lower Black Rock. Now, with Lower Black Rock, the only drawback, again, we can try to squeeze it, is the right-of-way almost becomes an hourglass. It gets really, really narrow, and believe it or not, I don't even know if we have enough room to do a five-foot wide sidewalk there. So that one there, we would do one of two things. We'd try to incorporate that into the DPW budget and do whatever room right up to the line that we could. It wouldn't necessarily be ADA compliant, but at least single file or at least get people off, that would be one way. Or the other is to see if we could obtain easements or to a small property, you know, sliver, but obviously that ends up costing a lot of money, it drags the project along. But if that's, you know, if that's the only thing preventing it, because as you know, or maybe you don't know, from Mark's, what is it, D E C? Yeah, money, we have recently done from, I'm not going to use businesses, the old Kentucky Fried Chicken, the banks there at Borough Street on Black Rock Turnpike, and have gone all the way down to Barrow Street with this. And then again, another phase would be to continue that area and go down to, say, CVS by Jennings Road. And so, you know, we're trying, we're trying to get that and we do have a map and, again, the Bike and Pedestrian Group and Engineering Office, we have a whole list of where the sidewalks are and where we need the gaps, and, I mean, where the gaps are, and that's where, that's probably where our most priority is, is trying to fill in those gaps, try to take the high areas that have the pedestrian generators, obviously near schools, near the train station, Fairfield Center area, you know, wherever the most pedestrian. And then even the public has a participation as well. We recently got a petition for 200 people signing near the Mill Hill School, and we'll be doing a small, it's a small little sidewalk section in that area, so the public does have some input on our priorities as well.
Just one more last question. If you're trying to funnel people walking and riding bikes from, you know, the If you're trying to funnel people walking and riding bikes from, you know, the Jennings Road area down here to the train station, there aren't many easy access points across either King's Highway or the circle area, right?
Correct.
And I believe the road that goes down, if you come all the way down to Chambers, that's the one by the Carverland Farms, that's pretty busy.
Right.
But if you go up to the one that goes to Pepe's, that's Brentwood, right?
Right.
So, assuming that that's a smart road to use as a cutover to get people wiggling across, you know, toward the train station, what type of improvements could be done to that road specifically or one like it that would work for the bikes, for the pedestrians, you know, as a subsequent add-on project? When you mentioned Brentwood before, is that what you were thinking or is that something else? Because you have to get the people down from over here to over here.
Brent, that's a good point. Brentwood was actually listed in the original grant application. At one point, we thought we were going to get maybe $2 million. And then, the way the state, the federal government had done it, they split the tap into, instead of a four-year program, into a two-year program. So, essentially, that cut the available money. But it's in a shorter timeframe. So, after this one would be completed, we would then proceed with the next one. But we actually had it even in the original application.
So, that's a more likely logical target because it's less busy with car traffic than, say, somebody else's? Or am I looking at it wrong?
No, I agree with your assessment. It definitely is less busy, less traveled, and I think you have the ability to make those improvements there within the existing right-of-way. You have an asphalt sidewalk now that's kind of bumpy in spots and there's some gaps in it.
Certainly for that area, that's one, you know, if you're coming from this direction, go on Brentwood. If you're coming from Black Rock Turnpike or this part of Castle, you're never going to do that. But that's where the one that I just mentioned before where DPW was able to do, we could do that. And then, if you're over here by, say, Ghoul Manor Park or whatever, you could probably go through New England Avenue. And then, whether you want to go up the hill or around, depending on your exact point of destination. Or by Whole Foods, because credit again to the businesses and the DPW for connecting that section as well. It's all sidewalk from Home Depot now all the way to the train station.
Correct.
So, again, so if you're coming from the east, west, or right down the middle, there are at least now potentially three spots to get you without having to, you know, walk two blocks out of your way, so to speak.
Good. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Appreciate your answer.
Sure.
I just, I want to thank you for your ongoing conversation with the Bike Pedestrian Group and I guess want to take this chance, we've had that conversation at our last meeting, and it's just a perfect example of how we can all work together, community development, it's business, it's transit, it's traffic safety, and it touches on so many things.
And zoning, too.
Zoning, oh, yeah. Absolutely. But there are so many aspects of it that come together and I, so I recognize all the work you're doing, bringing that all together and appreciate that.
And finance.
Of course.
Then, if I might, speaking of finance, the, could you all step us through the, now, this is the kind of backup to the waterfall chart, which really identifies projects. But I guess my first question is, what's the scoop on the design phase funding and where does that fit on here? And if it's not on here, where would it, where's the plan to place it?
I'll tackle that one. We do have Joe and Bob here as well.
Oh, right here. Right here. Want to just, is this the right one?
Yes. All right. And just, if I might, just to frame this discussion, could, we just did our capital planning workshop in September. Is this the same backup and documents that were used during that workshop?
Good afternoon, lady and gentleman board and madam chair, or madam, excuse me, secretary. The direct answer to your question is yes. This project is on the capital plan that was reviewed in September by the town bodies. The capital plan has $1.2 million, $200,000 for the non-recurring, and a million in capital. Even though non-recurring capital and capital are the same thing, there's that word differentiation there, that word nuance. The only difference between what's in the capital plan that was discussed in September and what's being presented today is that the project was completely planned for the fiscal year July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2015. The change that this would be is to accelerate the $200,000 design phase prior to that period of time. It would have no impact on the bonding amounts and dates that are anticipated.
Okay. Where would, just to elaborate, could you, if I'm looking for the $200,000 in terms of where that gets spent on here, where is that?
2014, 15.
That's when it's, on the top part of the schedule is when it's approved?
Right. And then, the bottom part of the schedule, you see non-recurring project expended this fiscal year, $1,780. It is incorporated into that $1,780,000 number.
Down here, so it's, the $200,000 is part of that 178.
Correct.
Okay, so that says it's all in here.
Mr. Barnhart, earlier when you were talking, you said you weren't sure, having looked at this document, where the $200,000 was. But I just want to clarify, in reading the resolution language, the total cost of the entire grant being up to $1.2 million. The $200,000 of the $1.2, $200,000 is for the design phase, right? So, if...
Of which our share would be 40.
Of which our share would be 40.
Correct.
But in order to, we have to expend and we're going to be reimbursed.
Yes, it's a reimbursement grant, correct.
I think I found that number.
Yeah, the plan has the monies all being spent in 14, 15, and all being reimbursed in 15, 16.
Right. So, it's all here, is what I'm confirming. In other words, it's all in there already. So, just to clarify and confirm, you were concerned and it is, it's all actually here as the total grant amount.
Yeah, the system is working as it was intended.
Okay. Then, if I might, let's go to the resolution that's on the agenda. And the last sentence of that resolution talks about the town share of this project to be granted for $1.2 million with the town share of this project to be funded from the non-recurring capital account. It sounds like we have both capital and non-recurring in this and it might make sense to strike that since that, if I understand it correctly, is not an accurate description of how it's going to be funded.
Correct. Well, I need to read the resolution. Thank you. I haven't looked at it for a couple of days.
Just focused on the last, actually, the last paragraph for the resolve, that the first selectman be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend the full amount of the grant up to $1.2 million with the town share of this project to be funded from non-recurring capital account.
It should just read capital account. And I think since you're dealing with it all at one time, it would make more sense just to take it from the capital. Or you could do $200,000 from non-recurring and a million from the capital. What we will do is, we will, depending on cash flow, the likelihood is that we bond the amount and then when we get the reimbursement, we'll use those monies directly to reduce the debt.
Okay. And then, if I might, looking at the, I'm just trying to tie up the capital plan to the resolution to what we're committing to. And there's a commitment letter that's attached to the 14 points of information. It's on the final page and back. And this kind of re-summarizes the project, re-summarizes where some of the funding goes, references some of the items included. But then, in the last paragraph, it says the town of Fairfield fully supports the project and is committed to providing 20% non-federal match of the tap funds. So, I guess my question there, just to be clear, what we're asking for at this point is a full commitment for the $1.2 million.
Correct.
That would be the easiest way to do this.
It's the only way this letter gets signed, the way it's written.
Oh, okay, then.
Yes.
That's one. Second, typically, when we're doing a capital project, there's a bonding resolution that comes along with it. I don't see that in our package.
We're not bonding this by itself. This will be bonded with a group when it's bonded. This authorizes it to be bonded in the future.
Correct. Normally, when you do like a school project, let's take the more recent ones, there was a bond resolution that came within that, so we saw that the terms, the bond, that type of thing, even though that's, for lack of a better term, repackaged later in different pieces.
There's no need to ask, that's a resolution. I mean, basically, you're authorizing it.
So, just may I...
Basically, you're authorizing the expenditure.
May I jump in to this? So, from a process standpoint, we're going to start design now. We have to spend $40,000.
You have to spend 200,000.
Up to $200,000, actually.
You have to spend up to $1.2 million.
For the design phase, it's up to $200,000.
Correct.
Okay. So, to begin the design phase, we're not, we're not going to use bonded monies. I thought I just heard you say that we're going to...
The town rarely uses bonded money initially. The town approves a project, town spends money on the project, and the town bonds for the project.
We bond after.
A significant percentage of the bonded funds are reimbursements to the town for monies the town has previously expended.
Right. Exactly. So, just to clarify then, though this money will eventually be bonded and is the intent, as what you're saying today, that that bonding resolution would be part of the non-recurring capital or the separate capital project?
The next bonding resolution will be in July of 2014. The amount of this that would be bonded would be bonded at that time. And incorporated in the bonding resolution at that time.
I think I'm just used to seeing it unless I'm...
No, you are.
Generally, when we're approving the expenditure, we also approve the amount to be bonded. We approve it for the full amount. Generally, it's a bond resolution that accompanies the document, even though, you are correct, it does get repackaged later.
Right.
As part of that, so I guess that's the...
No, you are correct.
Yeah. Kevin is correct that you are correct.
Kristin is not a...
But it's not, it's not a necessary resolution to pass at this time.
Then, I'm not sure when we do it because the, we would never look at this $1 million again.
The non-recurring resolution normally goes in with a list of items on it.
Right. But we'd basically be authorizing this here as part of that. The $1 million would be a capital project. We would never see that number again in our normal process. So, in essence, we would never approve the bonding of the specific resolution.
No, we would never bond anything without your approval.
But there, when would that come back before this board, then? Historically, it gets approved here, it gets repackaged later.
Historically, the non-recurring gets approved as a group in one bond resolution. Historically, the non-recurring does not get a bond resolution individually.
Correct.
The capital, the items more than a million normally do. This one, because it was set out, was divided into two pieces, you have the choice of approving the $200,000 design or the choice of approving both. For the letter to be, to adhere to the wording of the letter, you need to approve both today. You could approve both or you could just approve one and revise the letter. The, prior to the time of the bonding, a resolution would come forward to the town bodies to bond the amounts that would be covered by the bond.
Yeah, that's not...
I think you're getting bogged down in process.
Yep. And the approval process. And what you just described is not something that I remember happening in the past, but...
Well, this is a timing question because I think, I'll speak for myself. I hear what you're saying, if we had the bond resolution in front of us for today, it would probably make this simpler and more comfortable because that's traditionally how we've done things. I hear what you're saying about non-recurring capital happens together at one time. This is a little bit unique, this situation, because of the need, the match need and the need to turn in and sign this letter of commitment. From a timing standpoint, what are the timing deadlines? I see that you have some question marks on your approval date. So, what's the timeline situation, maybe the marker bill to one of you?
We were asked, in order to access the grant fund, we were asked some time ago to provide a commitment letter.
I think you may need to speak closer to the mic.
So, Ritter Bridgeport Regional Council had indicated that there are these funds available. There are other communities that are seeking funding for other projects within the region. And they asked us whether, in fact, we wanted to pursue, wanted to commit to this project, move forward with this project that we've been looking for funding for five, six years. So, the next step, what they wanted was a letter from the town, from the first selectman, indicating that the town was in fact committing to the project and was then going to take the necessary steps subsequently to appropriate the funds and initiate design. Because the number of months have now gone by, we're trying to put all those pieces into, at least to get to the, not only commitment letter, but also to initiate the design phase of the project. Construction obviously will occur sometime in the future. I don't know if that answers your question, but there are, there are, there is some pressure from the region. Either you're going to use these funds or we're going to have to commit, we're going to have to reallocate them to another project that might be more ready to go.
Which may or may not be in Fairfield.
Which probably won't be in Fairfield.
Okay.
So, that, that's the only issue that we're trying to...
So, I think what...
There's also the possibility, depending upon when the work is done and what the reimbursement process is like, that this might not be bonded.
That this might not?
Be bonded.
Be bonded.
But even when that's the case, we typically still approve a bonding resolution that travels with the resolution itself in the past.
That's what I remember.
Yeah. Whether it actually goes to a ban or a bond or neither.
Right.
There's typically a bonding resolution that is part of the initial presentation and approval process because you're right, it will not come back. So, we won't be approving a bonding resolution unless it's forced to come back for that sole purpose.
Well, just to clarify, the bond resolution is enable, enables us to bond. It's actually an approval for bonding. So, what I just heard Mr. Mayor say is, the work, what we're doing here today, and I agree with you, that is usually how we do it. I agree completely with both of you on that. This, we're being asked to commit, to spend this money as a town.
A $1.2 million project.
We're being asked to expend $1.2 million and being told that we will be reimbursed 80% of those funds. That's the commitment we're making. So, we're, we're saying we will do that. We're not, then today, if we take action on this and approve it, we are not committing, well, actually, if we have the resolution read as it, well, as it may be amended or as was discussed. We are talking about capital, which implies a bonding.
Uh-huh.
So...
It does.
That's, you know, Mr. Mayor, your comment about it may or may not be bonded leads me to question, is there a way, I do not want to lose the opportunity for these funds to another community, as deserving as those other communities may be. I would like to see us be able to move forward with this project. I recognize the concern and I share with my fellow selectmen. However, wonder if we could amend the document differently to then give us the freedom and clarity to say that, yes, if we are bonding this money, we will still have to approve a bond resolution. It will have to come back, the bond resolution itself and the language.
If I may add, I don't know if this helps...
If I may add, I don't know if this helps you answer your question or not. There will be at least one, probably two more resolutions regarding this project to be presented before the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and RTM, because that's the way the state, almost every phase, the state will require us to do that anyway. So, for the, certainly before the construction phase, there'll be another agreement that will have to be signed and they'll want another resolution. So, we'd have to go through the whole process, basically, again. So, I don't know if that helps answer your question. Is, there'll be at least one more, I know that for a fact, resolution that has to be signed for this project and probably two. I don't know if that impacts any decision or not. I, it won't be the only to, now again, for funding, I'm not sure how that works.
Based on what those resolutions are, they may or may not have to come before all three boards.
Oh, okay. That's true, too.
They may have to come back before this board potentially, maybe not, based on what they say.
Right.
But they may come before this board and not the others. So, that's, and is there some reason, given we're doing both these, given it's all at the same time, is there a reason, I know originally, going back in time, we looked at these as phases spread out over time. Is there some reason we're just not doing the 1.2 million? Much like in a school project, we'll do the, you know, design phase and the construction all as part of an overall bond resolution.
I had authored part, I had authored the, the resolution and I just put that design phase in there if for some reason that there was a, a big quagmire and it, it caused a huge delay and then we found out from the regional planning, hey, you gotta, you gotta give us something or you gotta at least sign that commitment letter. If that helped, you know, secure the grant, I, I wanted to at least throw that design part in there. If you want to take it out, I have no objections. I don't think the region has any objections.
The issue, the issue is, I understand, the commitment letter says we're, we're in for the 1.2.
Does.
All right. So, we might as well just get the bond resolution that says we're in for the 1.2.
Right.
It ties all of that together. My concern is that, that if we approve the authorization to spend, that typically is accompanied by with an authorization of bond. So, we know kind of where we're getting the money from.
Right.
Not that we write the bond resolutions very often or critique those. We generally, I've seen us tweak some of the wording issues on there on occasion.
Sure.
But there's more correcting typos or dollar inconsistencies than anything else.
Right.
But my concern is that we wouldn't have approved the bonding at this board. I don't know how that then, because the option would be potentially Senator for Finance, they have to approve the bonding or the source of the money. But I don't see how it gets from here to there without us approving it.
Maybe we could do something like this because it's a great project. We, and we don't want to stop it or slow it down. There's no question.
I think everybody's in very-
There's no need, pee myself. There's no need to approve the bonding resolution at the same time you approve the expenditure authorization. That's first. Secondly, you can't approve the resolution subject to bonding because that would make it qualified resolution and wouldn't satisfy the purpose of the letter. And thirdly, certainly, there would never be any bonding accomplished without the approval of the appropriate bond boards, yourselves, the Board of Finance and the RTM, for the bonding.
So, just not-
So, just because it's not here today is maybe different from the past, but it's not really important.
So, I'm, I'm with you on number two and I'm with you on number three. While I believe you on number one, I'm not convinced that number one is the way we want to do it or follow suit with how we've done it prior. Doesn't mean it's wrong. It doesn't, it, it just means I don't know. So, again, without holding it up, is there a, when, when will this go to the Board of Finance?
First week in November, whichever.
At least the day after election day.
They actually have a quarterly. Is it next week? So, it, it's not going next week, though.
Correct.
It's going to go the first week.
You could just amend it then to say, resolve authorizing 1.2 million dollars to fund title of project and issue bonds appropriate. You could just write, you could just do that.
Or else, you know, if, if there's a way that a majority of this board could be at that Board of Finance meeting, we could have a quick 15-minute meeting before they start at 7:30 and approve this with a, with the bonding resolution attached to it, if that's the way we want to go. I'm just trying to find a way to solve this issue without slowing the project down, if there is a way to do it.
Does it, let's, let's look at, at kind of the RTM meeting. If it goes to the Board of Finance in November, it would go to the RTM meeting in November. That's their organizational meeting. Have we talked to the RTM about whether they're okay with taking up-
Voting item that night.
That night.
They typically don't vote on items that one makes.
Because they don't have-
No, they do. They do.
Do they?
Yes, they have. I just, definitely. I mean, been in that position before.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So, it sounds like the easiest, since this is a concern by the body, it seems like the easiest solution is to amend the resolution to authorize appropriation of 1.2 million dollars in bonding to fund the King Highway pedestrian project. Period.
Yeah, that, that gives us, when do we, still would like to see that the, I guess I'm not comfortable sending this on to the Board of Finance without the bond resolution attached. So, my question is, if we do that, when do we get the bond resolution back before this board and before it goes to the Board of Finance?
Thank you.
When is the Board of Finance, I'm looking right now, meeting November 6?
Should be the, should be the Wednesday after Election Day.
Right. November 6, which is, we meet that same day.
We meet that afternoon, don't we?
Yeah. Just confirming. That's what I thought. So-
Sounds like November 6 is the date.
I, the other option is for us to bring this back.
Well, we have our town attorney-
Bring the whole thing back. We'd never get it to the town, Board of Finance here.
I mean, go ahead. The town attorneys here, is, is, is bond counsel in the room as well for the other item? Or is bond, I'm not sure.
No.
No? Okay.
If you want a bond resolution, you need bond counsel.
No, I was just looking for him to opine on the fact that we're uncomfortable with there not being one versus Mr. Mayor's opinion that it's okay without one. We, that's where the difference lies here. It's very simply that, without holding the project up.
Can you put a simple resolution on it, not the full, and let the full one come to the board, say it's in proper form or something, attach it on the-
I'll do whatever you want. We can, we can approve, because technically, when does this letter, this letter can't get signed until the RTM approves the project in its entirety anyway. Right? Or is that not true?
Simply put, it won't be signed until the RTM approves it.
Oh, you got it.
Just to clarify that.
So, if we were to vote on this with a resolution or find out between now and then, we really don't need a resolution on Wednesday, November 6, then the Board of Finance could still have it on their agenda that night, knowing that that's the one open item. We've already reviewed the item itself. I think. Maybe?
Potentially. Is there any, if we were to do this as a 1.2 million dollar bond resolution, is there any reason for paragraph three on this resolution that appears on the agenda? We've got resolved, further resolved, and then further resolved. We're authorized to start the design phase, but if we get the, all the money approved, we can just start.
Right.
So, we could potentially lose that, which just simplifies the resolution. The first, hereby authorized to accept and expend the full amount of the grant up to 1.2 million with, I'm not sure if anything after that is necessary.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, and then if, can we add something in that for the 1.2 million to say, with the appropriate, with approval of the appropriate bond resolutions? So, the last sentence would say, First Selectman B hereby is authorized to accept and expend the full amount of the grant up to 1.2 million with appropriate bond resolution supporting this amount. That might work. All right. And then we come back on the 6th and, and have the bond resolution approved. So, it goes to the Board of Finance with the bond resolution.
I think that would, that would work for me.
So, here's the question then. Are, we, the original resolution talked about non-recurring capital account.
That's going to be deleted, but yes.
Right. I know. The, when we have the bond resolution, then where is that, what's the resolution, how's that resolution going to read?
Okay. It's, it would read like our normal bond resolutions and say, we're allowed, we're authorized to bond this for up to 20 years. It would be a capital project bond, much like Riverfield School or Ludlow or Ward Brooks.
So, we're going to do it, we're going to authorize the 1.2 through capital, not non-recurring as, as a project.
Yeah, the breaking out doesn't really flow well and isn't really necessary since we're doing them all the same, much like a school project or building project. We do a design phase with an architect, but it's all part of the $10 million that we authorized for the school project. So, this would be analogous to, except it would be 1.2 million rather than a larger number. Would be the thought.
If you can words with that, I'm good with that. That gets us through, through the item. All right.
So, the thought would be that that last sentence, the, the agenda item would read, that the First Selectman B and hereby is authorized to accept and expend the full amount of the grant up to 1.2 million with the appropriate bond resolutions.
And you're carving, you're carving out that piece, too, right?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Right.
Do you mean-
So, you're going to carve out, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is what you're trying to get upon approval of?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think maybe for the language rather than saying.
With approval of the appropriate bond resolution.
Upon approval of. Yeah. I think that's-
I think that's, that works, right?
All right. And then those bond resolutions should be approved before it goes to the Board of Finance. So, this would all be attached. Mark, Bill, Mr. Mayor, does that work for you guys?
Works fine.
Yes.
Yeah. Great.
All right, Jen, we're going to need to have that on our November 6 agenda. And if we can work with bond counsel to get that resolution before us, then it would all tie off before it gets to the Board of Finance.
Beautiful.
So, then, I'd like to move to amend this, but I just want to make sure we're clear on any other questions or issues before we do that.
One other question for Mr. Hurley or Mr. Barnhart. Our consent to this resolution, it keeps us in the queue with GBRC, right? In other words, I, again, I'm, none of us, we have already said that, want to risk the possibility of-
We've already, I know Bill has talked to, we've talked to the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council and advised them as to the approval process. So, I don't think this changes that at all. So, they're cognizant of the fact that we're going through this legislative approval process.
Great. Thank you.
And Mr. Bedoli of GBRC was here just last month to get us to approve a resolution. So, he's familiar with at least the Board of Selectmen and RTM as we go through the process.
I did have one final question, not on the, not on the amendment, but on the item itself. Is that okay? Mr. Barnhart, you mentioned before block grant money that might be available and we could use it as our portion without interfering with the 80% reimbursement, correct?
Yes.
About what level of funds do we have available that you could apply or use for this project?
And just, just to clarify, that's, you're asking about the 40 grand that would be, we're talking about the 40, so 40,000 dollars.
Yeah. Do you have 40 of it? Do you have 20 of it?
We believe that we have 40 that we can use for this purpose.
You do?
Yes.
Okay.
40,000 available for the design phase of it, yes. We would need to amend our existing plan, which is subject to a public comment period, but we can do that fairly, fairly easily.
And we would only be able to utilize that concept for the design phase, not for the subsequent construction phase? Or is there a way to look at that?
We could look at construction as well. Because of our grant funding having been diminished over the last few years, yeah, the total grant is approximately $450,000 roughly now. So, projects generally now that we're looking to fund are somewhere, 50,000 is probably the upper limit of what a, a single project that we can fund.
So, that's a probably not, but the 40 is, it sounds pretty good.
The 40, we, we did definitely confirm that we have the funds available that we can reallocate for that purpose without, without jeopardizing other existing project and commitments that we've made with those.
Or jeopardizing this 80%.
And again, just to clarify, the 40 grand is essence coming from excess funds on this?
Yes.
As, as we approve this, the balance of the town share would come from bonding.
Correct. Yep.
So, that, that it wouldn't be a budget impact from that standpoint.
Correct.
But it would reflect in the debt service. We'd get the reimbursement amount to pay the debt service down. Well, that would leave us with the approximately 200,000 to 240,000 dollars that we'd be paying out over time.
Got it. Great.
Okay.
All right. Then, let me make a motion to amend the resolution before us, striking the third paragraph, further resolved that the First Selectman B and hereby is authorized to start the design, initial design phase, et cetera, through the end of that. And further amended, that we go down to the last paragraph, further resolved that the First Selectman B and hereby is authorized to accept and expend the full amount of the grant up to 1.2 million with the approval of the appropriate bond resolutions. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the amendment, the amendment only? Jen?
May I ask a question? In paragraph four, you're striking the words with?
Basically, if you put a, striking all the words after 1.2 million and adding in or replacing them with, with the approval of the appropriate bond resolution.
And will any language be added to the letter?
We don't, we're not approving that.
I don't know and I just, the issue is, the letter's a commitment to do the whole project. And I believe we have plenty of flexibility to reword this.
Yes, yes.
The concern is that we don't want to sign this letter unless we're committed to the whole project. Is that fair?
We're good.
All right. So, we have a second on that. Any questions on the amendment, the amendment only? Any comments from the public on the amendment, the amendment only? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, the resolution is before us as amended. Any further comment on the resolution?
No.
Any comments from the public on the resolution as amended? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You've been helping getting through this. Coming up next, I'd like the board to consider adding an item to our agenda. This would take a two-thirds vote. I believe you have a copy of the full resolution in your packet. I would make a motion that we add the following, to here, consider and act upon a resolution authorizing appropriation of $12,500,000 to refund certain of the town's outstanding bonds and authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds to finance such appropriation. There is a lot of other documentation that I could read along with that if this board would like me to do that. Is that okay as a description? That was a motion. Do I have a second?
This is debatable motion. I don't remember my Roberts rule.
I think, if we have a second, we can certainly discuss it.
Yes, I will second.
Unless we get at least two-thirds voting for it, it's not going to move onto the agenda. So, right now, all we're talking about is moving it onto the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe it is open for discussion. So, any discussion on adding this to the agenda? And again, the motion is to add it to the agenda, not about the item itself.
My concern is, well- My concern is, well, actually, the quest, I have a question about timing, and again, the same issue that came up in the last item. We have, the Board of Finance and RTM are not going to be hearing this until November.
Correct.
We, I recognize the Board of Finance is meeting the same night that we are, but having just received information on this today and not really having a chance to review it, in addition, it wasn't on the agenda and noticed to the public, and though there may be routine aspects of it, I do have concern about that and putting it on the agenda for that reason, as well as just personally would like to further review before voting on this item. So those are my concerns about putting it on today's agenda.
Okay.
I do share Selectman McCarthy-Behe's concerns, or questions I should say, about, because I did see some email traffic on this only a couple hours ago, and I've been on the run all day, so I did not have time to review it, read it, print it out even. So from that perspective, it's, it's new, it's news. So your first comment about timing, if we could quickly address the timing of it, because is, I'm not sure what the timing needs to be in order to take advantage of what we're trying to accomplish here, or if there are some options there that would give us the opportunity to learn more about it, see some documentation on, you know, the numbers, the bonds, the years, the paybacks, and the savings.
The board on Friday received about 18 pages of documentation in the email that described all of this, so it's not terribly that new.
The, which board on Friday?
You did, the, the package that went out.
I didn't, did I miss that?
The package that Kathy Griffin sent out with the, all the board documentation.
I sent it out, it was just on my drive.
Yeah, it didn't come.
I don't think so.
Oh, didn't go off Friday?
I saw something this afternoon.
I could have missed it. This afternoon it said it was, oh, here's an update.
It wasn't, it wasn't listed on the agenda, so I'm not sure.
Wasn't on the agenda.
I wouldn't have looked through the packet information looking for this.
Okay.
Right.
I may have missed it.
But basically, it's pretty straightforward, it's pretty simple. The town has approximately $10,925,000 par amount bonds, debt service about $12,100,000, serial bonds that mature between now and January 1 of 2020, which are becoming callable. Based upon the current interest rate environment, if we refi those bonds, last time we ran the numbers was last week, Thursday or Friday, I forget, if we refied it as of the numbers of last week, the net savings to the town over that four-year period, excuse me, 19, six-year period, would be $713,000. And that's the longer the shorter.
Just, may I jump in? I didn't, I confirmed, the email that was sent Friday did not have, didn't have this documentation in it, so just so you are aware of that.
That was a glitch, yeah.
Yeah.
I was informed it went out.
Okay. But the reality is this requires the approval of each of the towns.
The idea is to approve by this body, approved by the Board of Finance in November, approved by the RTM in November, so that if interest rates hold, we would be ready to go in December.
Okay. So here's, I am not interested in voting on this item today. I am willing to vote to put it on the agenda for discussion purposes, I, again, and then would probably move to postpone to the next meeting for a vote, communicating to the Board of Finance if they are willing to understand that it would be, again, that same-day transaction, just because Mr. Mayor's here and if, if we can at least discuss part of that, but again, that, that would be my, my preference.
I concur.
Any further discussion before we move to put it on the agenda?
Not for me.
No.
All in favor of putting it on the agenda?
Do you need the public comment for that? I don't know.
All right, any comment from the public on putting this on the agenda? Seeing none, back to the board. Mr. Lester, thank you. Back to the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? You got those, Jen? All right. It is, the resolution is before this board, for discussion on the resolution. Any questions or comments?
So my primary question actually would be to Mr. Mayor, just to, if we could get breakdown of fees, I'm not a bond expert, and don't pretend to be, but in terms of how, how this process is going forward, what money we are spending where, I think there was an amount that goes towards fees, different fees, and I think that backup information would be helpful for the discussion next time. And you may have it available, but it'd be helpful to have that in front. I know there are different fees when we do these transactions and.
Yeah, you have your underwriting fee, and you have your legal fees, and you have your, your management fees, or process management fees. Total fees on something inside would be about $140,000. The $718,000 number that I quoted earlier is net of those fees. Basically, GFoa has a policy that you shouldn't refi bonds with a less than 3% favorable bond rating return. Bond rating return of this is 6.4982% as of last Thursday.
And just to clarify, we have refinanced bonds as this type of process several times over the last year, most recently, I think, two years ago, and saved close to $3 million in interest in a comparable transaction. Mr. Scott, I know going back to your days on the Board of Finance, this happened a couple of different times.
A number of times, right?
And typically, this would be an authorization, and again, I'll go back to the last time that I recall, this was authorized in August, and I think the bonds were actually refinanced in November, December, because that's when the interest rates, kind of when we struck the interest rates based on advice of our, our bond council. So it's the type of thing we have done before. The exact amount that we refinance was based on, Mr. Mayor, I guess a couple of different factors, so we're not sure it'll be 12 million, but that's why the authorization reads up to 12 million.
Yeah, there's always, there's a, there's a town policy, some, some refi issues are more uncertain than others because of the interest rate differential between, and the coupon rates, if you will. This one is fairly certain, fairly definitive, but the town has a policy of always, just in case if something changes a little bit with respect to what you, what you refi, there's always been a 10% cushion built into that. But this is, there's a specific amount that's callable, the par amount is 10,125, the call amount, the debt service amount over the time period would be 12,100,000.
And as I look at this resolution, it also does come back to the, the Bond Committee for ultimate approval of whether we go forward with this. Bond Committee, again, is this board, Mr. Mayor and our Town Treasurer, Helen Devonso, who is actually seated in the back of this room. So any other questions at this time?
No.
Any comments from the public on the refi issue? All right, oh, Ms. Devonso, if you would please come up to the mic.
Helen Devonso Jennings wrote, "I would not vote to approve of this today based on the situation in the US Congress." I would, looks like it's all good, but the vote hasn't taken place, and since this can't be officially affirmed, I would, and I maybe, I lost track while I was reading the Times to see if the vote had gone through, what your position is, but I would think this would have to wait until your next meeting, the same day as the Board of Finance, and then it would be absolutely appropriate and advisable.
All right. Could somebody kind of explain how this is tied back to the vote that you were talking about?
On the off-chance that we do go over the fiscal cliff and all that hideous stuff, we do not know what's going to happen to the economic environment, and I know that we wouldn't refinance, I just wouldn't make any commitments.
This is not, just to be clear, this is not a commitment to refinance, this is an authorization to refinance if it's approved by the Bond Committee and the five of us, three of us board, and you two would be the five people that make that decision, so if things changed, be it interest rates that became unfavorable, or the economic climate that became unfavorable.
I'm sorry, also, you know, having this put on the agenda without it being properly noticed, particularly today, with what's going on, even though I know you wouldn't do it, I wouldn't sign it, da-da-da, I just think the timing is born, that it should wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, thank you, seeing none, back to the board now.
I move to postpone this item to a date certain, our November 6th Board of Selectmen meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the postponement? Any comments from the public on the postponement and the postponement only? Back to the board, any further comments? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll go along with it, support you guys. All right, thank you, see you on the 6th. All right, next item.
They're back.
Mr. Bowman. All right, there are a series of items here from Public Works. I'll read the first one, and see how much we can do after that. Director of Public Works, "To here consider and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolved that the power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and Green Skies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Public Works Garage at 705 Richard White Way, for the sole benefit of the Public Works Garage, the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved." May I have a motion to accept?
So will.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bowman, can you fill us in?
Yes, I think we're back here because a number of reasons. Went to the RTM, they had a number of questions on, on the contract, of the contracts. Also, we got the town attorney involved, he had some other questions, and I had some questions myself. And basically, as we did further due diligence, we came up with a, a plan which stands, helped to come up with a one contract, basically, so we have a sample contract for all vendors to use now in the future. We then negotiated with the vendors, and they basically agreed to what we wanted in this contract, which is now in this contract summary I did for you. All the contracts will have the same provisions in them.
The contract summary is the spreadsheet that?
No, this, the words, rather.
Okay, the words here.
Two pages.
Very good.
The spreadsheet just shows you the savings involved over the period of time, the size of the contract. And we also put in an actual explanation of just how the ERIC program works, which is a little confusing, so we created that. Also, there's no longer going to be a lease, which is what we're asking the RTM to approve. It's just going to be a right of access to the building, no formal leases required.
No formal easement, you mean?
Or lease, easement, whatever, just a right of access. On the rooftops, it would have been a lease, and the parking lot would have been access, or what it means, you just said, I forgot.
Okay, you've added some PowerPoint slides here at the end to help with that.
Just to understand exactly how that process works. There's really no, no change in the economic terms, just, there are some clarifications to what happens at the end of the contract, what happens if there's a problem on the rooftop and things like that, so.
Any questions from the board?
Hey, thanks for coming back, appreciate that. Is it, is it your collective opinion that the changes that are being proposed to these contracts globally, do they answer and satisfy all of the, hopefully satisfy and answer all the legal questions and other questions that the RTM as a body proposed?
I think they answer them, whether they satisfy them or not, I can't, but I think that we've answered all their questions. I think they should be okay with it. We, we made some changes, and we standardized it so that they were all going to be the same. There may be a couple minor changes from one to the next, but nothing substantive.
But you feel pretty good about the overall?
Yeah, oh yeah, I think, I think that it'll be good. I think there's, there may be a couple issues with a couple of the vendors, but we'll hammer those out.
It's more of a wording issue than anything else, yeah. And we will be meeting with the, the RTM, Democratic Republicans, who ask these questions prior to the meeting, to explain all this.
Committee?
I don't know what it is, there's, they assigned two attorneys to view this. We're going back to the committees again, but before the committee, we'll meet.
Prior to the committee, okay.
In thinking about this, though, and I just saw the, the resolutions, I'm wondering if maybe it would be better to add an amendment to each resolution, at the end, just say, and to grant the appropriate access, so that's in the resolution. I, I want the RTM to know that we're granting, you know, these aren't easements, they're more in the nature of a license, they're not easements, they're not leases, so I'm not sure technically that they have to go to the RTM for approval, but I think probably discretion's the better part of valor here, and to let them know that there's going to be an access, an access right granted, it won't be an easement that runs with the land, it'll simply be a revocable right to access, and perhaps to the end of each one, let's see.
If I might, as long as we're looking at the resolution itself.
Yep.
The first one here, it, it talks about for the sole benefit of the Public Works Garage?
Yes.
What is the purpose of that? And my question is, Mr. Bowman, we've talked about virtual metering and basically running something here and getting credit at the library for it, does putting for the sole benefit of the Public Works Garage limit our options in terms of if that type of capability?
It would, except that we're not providing anywhere near the full amount of power for the building, but it does not have to be in there, they say for the benefits of both of it, which I don't know why the sole word is there myself.
Okay, and I'm just thinking that that provides us a little more flexibility, not quite sure how that might work, but best to keep our options open.
Yep.
If we can. And thank you, by the way, for the education on how some of that might work in the future and. All right, any other questions from the board?
No.
I, I do. So I am thankful that you're back and that Mr. Lester, you're here as well, and I think we did have a pretty healthy discussion here, and as often happens as the process continues, and this is the gift of having a legislative body with a lot of, a breadth of experience, a lot more questions were raised, and I think it raised a lot more questions for me. One of the questions I had is what were the changes? Can you summarize for us what the changes were in the contract? And for, just to clarify, before you do that, I, I mentioned this the last time when we met, the, the contracts are lengthy.
Yes.
And I, last time, I think we got them maybe a couple days before, a day before, but today, I didn't get the contracts in hand until during the day today, so I have not been able to read the contracts, which is making me uncomfortable to vote for them, though I'm not a lawyer, I do actually read my backup material. So one of the things I'd like to learn today from you is what, what the changes were that addressed some of the concerns in the contract.
First of all, I think you have to remember that these, although they're, they're contracts and they're technically subject to approval by the RTM, they're simply purchase agreements. You know, we're purchasing power, we're not expending money, we're not appropriating money, so in that sense, you know, it's not really subject to approval by the various boards, the purchasing department or one of the departments of the town went out and then get something cheaper this way. And if you bear that in mind, what we're trying to do is protect the town, you can't protect them from everything, and we've put provisions in here about insurance and others. I, I wanted more insurance, I wanted more liability, you know, that the, that the, I wanted more liability, you know, that the, that the companies are more responsible for doing things. I want, I want to make sure that, to the best that we can do it, and nothing's perfect, that these are going to be removed at the end of the term. We wanted to put in provisions, and we've done that, to allow for shutdowns for some period of time at no cost to the town in case we need to maintain the roofs. You know, I've had discussions with Ed about how these are put on the roof, you know, and I guess they're designed so that they don't damage the roof. And there was concern about that. So we've put provision in about that. Those are the major changes that we made.
I think one, just one other change, they were concerned what happened at the end of the contract. So we clarified, there's three things that can happen.
Right.
One is that we can buy it, two, we can extend the contract, or three, we can ask them to take it, remove it. And that's what Stan's saying, removal, that wasn't mentioned in the contract. We had, there was concern also in some of the insurance provisions, the town wasn't able to initially insure. Now that's been added. And the roof was the main thing, the age of the roof, we found the ages of the roof, and have provisions with the town to go in and maintain the roof under different cert- emergency repairs, don't have to notify them, just go in and do it. Small repairs, you go in and notify them in writing, they come on the roof with us, look at it, we do it. Major roof repair, a major replacement, then we have to pay them lost revenue for repairs to replace the roof. So all these roofs, we're going to want to have a life of 20 to 27 years, so it's questionable whether they ever be replaced during the life of this. So those are the major ones I have.
The agreements were basically okay. I mean, a couple of them were really lousy agreements, and we just scrapped those completely and said, "Use our agreement." And then we tightened up the agreements just to make these provisions in them to protect us as best we can. I mean, you can't, you know, nothing is perfect, but to the extent that we can, the town is going to be protected. And obviously, you know, people say, "Well, what happens if they don't perform?" Well, we go back to buying electricity from the UI. I mean, that's really the downside. The upside is, we could save a lot of money over the course of this, at no cost to the town, so.
I have a few more follow-up questions.
You want to add one?
I, when I realized today that I would not be able to read all the contracts, I decided instead, well, at least I should figure out, besides the questions I already had coming in, some other questions. And so I thought, I usually tell my kids, "Go online." So I went online and just did a Google search, and I came up with the National Renewable Energy Laboratory's Power Purchase Agreement Checklist for State and Local Governments. And I skimmed this because, again, this was late in the day. But one of the things that occurred to me is, this isn't, this is the newer thing for us. Mr. Bowman, I've said before, you are amazingly versed in all of these issues and speak another language that the rest of us don't speak. But this was an interesting find for me in that, you know, are there things that we're not considering? One of the quick things that I saw was, for example, soil testing and hurricane wind speed for the, on the ground mounting. That's one aspect of, have we considered that?
Yes. They would have to go get building permits, and the permits, building department would require that they have to, either on the rooftop or the ground, be subject to the 100 mile an hour winds.
Either way.
Yep.
Okay.
We talked about that. I mean, I'm, it's an interesting question.
We had the same problem that the, we did, we did one of these on the roof of the compost center at the Sutcher, and the building department put us through that whole exercise, and I had to scrap the fascins to the roof. So that's part of the building department's ordinary review.
Well, I, I'm going to pass this along. I don't know if there's anything, you probably, you may know all this stuff already.
I haven't seen it myself.
But I thought that there were some helpful things in here. One of the other questions that, that I had, kind of taking a step back, and this one's probably more for Mr. Bowman, is the last time you were here, we talked about the schools and kind of partnering. And it seems that we, we're moving forward on this because there's opportunity. We're kind of responding, I don't want to say reacting, I think we're taking advantage of opportunities. And I have a sense, and I think we talked a little bit about this, about an overall plan for the town. In other words, you know, are we going to try and do this as many places?
Yes.
As we can. And I think, I wanted to rephrase what I said differently than last time, was I really, I would like to see, and strongly urge the town, excuse me, to, to meet with the Board of Education, because the more I go through this and look at this, it seems that everyone needs to sit down together. And I know that you are talking with Mr. Cullen, but it doesn't make sense to me that we're having this conversation about all these town buildings. Our schools are town buildings. We have large, but open roofs, so I'm just going to, I'm just taking that chance to reiterate that as well.
I will say, we're working on another project, which we'll probably back to in a month, which is part of this group, but was at the Fairfield Railroad Station, which would in fact cover most of the parking lot on the west side of the station. All that power, then would go to Tomlinson School.
Right.
So we'll go into Board Education on that one. The school peoples, I know, they're worried about roofs, just like we were.
Right.
I know, the roof, the building committee is looking to, that proposal is to put solar on that roof. So I can't answer for the rest. They are moving in that direction. You're right. I mean, we look at the breakdown of electric costs, 16 million kilowatt hours is used by schools and 9 million by the town, so they're one and a half times our power consumption. So there's much more savings there.
So, right, and so it's really imperative that we're all having this conversation in the future.
And just, just to clarify, Mr. Bowman has been, very definitely in the past.
Absolutely.
So it's not like, that's not taking place.
Absolutely.
Second, photovoltaic was one of the things that was considered for the ward roof at one point, and was scrapped because of the cost, because we didn't have the grants in hand at that time to do that.
So now, these...
We've also looked at generators for Ludlow Middle School and...
Fuel cells, right.
Absolutely.
Fuel cells as part of that, but the grants that we were looking for didn't come through with that. So I just want it clear that, and I don't want this characterized as that we're not talking with Board of Ed, that's a whole series of ongoing discussions.
Yep.
It's just a function of what grants, what funding comes through, and consequently, what we're allowed to do with that. I think if you go back in time, there may not have been as much cooperation if you go back a number of years, but Mr. Bowman has steadily continued his efforts, and I want to compliment the school administration on working more closely with the town on doing just that.
And this kind of process will happen once or twice a year for the next 10 years. So there's plenty of opportunities going forward.
Thank you.
Have to go green.
Yep. One of the other questions I had is about, it actually...
Did you want to pass that down?
I am, actually, but I want to make use of this first. I will certainly share it. So the whole, the three parties involved, we have the UI and the town and then our vendors. And I, I noticed in your write-up that the vendor's required to get the interconnection agreement with UI. So will we, will you, will we as a town, and will you get to review the agreement, or is that really...
We have to sign it.
Okay.
Has to be submitted by us, they're just paying $30,000, $40,000 to do it, but we have to sign it because we own the building.
Gotcha. Okay. So that was, that was one of my questions. And insurance, Mr. Lester, you already answered that question, and that was another one of them, so. And I just, I would like to respond. I know Mr. Bowman has been talking with the schools, and I, I don't think that any of us can say enough about the work that has been done. And I also know that the schools are aware of that. I, I just think that the more we can do, Mr. Bowman's talking about Riverfield School, from what I understand, the last conversation I was aware of, and there may have been subsequent conversations, there wasn't, that wasn't happening there. That's why I am encouraging and supporting any conversations that happen. I am not saying that we are not having the conversations, I just...
Well, they're not at the Board of Education level, they're at the staff level, so.
Thank you. Okay. Those are all the questions that I have.
Make copy.
I only have one copy. I actually, yeah, I can email the link.
Yeah, I want you to just do that, sure.
Any further questions?
So you want this back, then?
No, it's okay. I can go online. I actually have printed it for...
Just to clarify, I realize we're on the first one here, but you put together a chart that summarized all of them.
Yes.
And focused on some of the numbers down here, just wanted to clarify. I see an annual savings for, looking across all six of these projects, of $43,000 per year, 20-year savings of $582,000.
Yep.
At the 15.5 cents per kilowatt hour price, or compared to that. And what, the last column shows $2.8 million in savings over 20 years. Can you explain?
Yes.
How we go from just under $600,000 to $2.8 million?
If our annual cost of electricity goes up by 1% a year, our savings go from 580 to the 2.8 million.
Over the 20.
Over 20 years.
So that's, and that's 1% on the 15.5 cents that we're currently paying.
Yep. So that's, it's a big impact. But again, we made them price a lot, there was no increase. Otherwise, I was uncomfortable showing these kind of numbers. So at 15.5, we still save almost half a million bucks, huh?
So if the price, so if the price of power doesn't go up at all to us, we save almost $600,000.
Right.
Yep. If it goes up at 1% a year, and what's the trend been over the last 10 years?
4% a year.
Okay. So if it goes up at 1% a year, which still might be perceived as a reasonably conservative guess, we'd serve 2.8 million. If it goes up at the 4% a year that it's been averaging over the last 10...
That's 3% over the last 20 years.
Dramatically, dramatically higher than the 2.8 million.
Because what's happened is the cost of buying power has gone down, generation.
UI's raised their costs faster than the cost of generation's gone down. So we're still increasing despite it. They've almost doubled their cost in 10 years.
All right. Then back to the resolution. I look at the resolution before us.
Right.
I'd like to propose two amendments. One is to remove the words "sole" from the phrase, "The sole benefit."
I don't know that much on that. This may not come on the rule.
And second, after the word "garage," to put in, "Grant appropriate access." So if amended, the resolution will read, "Resolve that the power purchase agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Green Skies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Public Works Garage at 705 Richard White Way, for the benefit of the Public Works Garage, and grant appropriate access, the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved." Second. Thank you. Does that make...
It does. And to grant...
You put the wording in it, which fits.
I did.
To grant.
And to grant. Jen, do you have that? All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment, the amendment only? Back to the board. Are we okay to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So the item as amended is before us. Any further discussion?
I am 100% supportive of these projects and the work that has been done, and again, want to thank both of you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, we, we are incredibly fortunate. I am going to be abstaining on these votes only because I did not have the chance to read the contracts, and I like to do that. But I want you to understand that I don't feel prepared just because of that, and I am planning to abstain, but I do support the projects.
I don't know, did you receive a contract for each one, a separate contract?
Yeah.
You only need to read one of them. They're all the same, except for the name and the...
And I didn't know that until coming here today.
Just so you don't go through, you know, 400 pages of documents.
I appreciate that. I, that's, and that, I think helpful for the other members of the RTM, for the members of the RTM to know that as well.
You really want to tell them?
So, yep.
Mr. Cully, any comments on the item as amended?
No, thank you.
Are we ready to vote? Oh, any public comments on the item as amended?
Anne Stamler for Leven Stratfield Road, member of the RTM District 5, for about another two weeks. This project received a great deal of support at the RTM level, and I certainly support it and many of the other efforts that Mr. Bowman has made. Two things. I may not be remembering correctly, I don't believe attorneys were assigned to review these projects. We are very fortunate to have a number of attorneys on the RTM, and several from, at least one from each party, did offer very constructive questions and recommendations. And I'm sure we will be appreciative of their reviewing this before they come to committee, but that was not a formal assignment in my recollection. That might be a good idea in the future, but it didn't happen this time. The other thing is, an issue that came up that I just put on the table, very much in keeping with the discussion that already took place, was that it would be helpful to have some kind of an overview of the, of Mr. Bowman's or the Department of Public Works's plan, projection, expectations for projects of this sort going forward. This is a large number to undertake at one time. It's clearly part of a direction, and a very admirable direction, putting our town in the forefront, really on the cutting edge of this type of green energy. But it would be helpful to have a picture of this on a large scale, on the town side and on the town and Department of Education side. Clearly, there's discussion, but we don't know about it. So I'm just putting that forward as a recommendation as these contracts are brought to the RTM this month. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? All right. Back to the board. I guess it, I would ask, you'd mentioned you're not going to vote. My concern would be, are we going to vote this down, are we going to postpone it, or are we going to...
No, I plan to support this.
Okay. I just, I just want to go through the process and vote it down if we're not going to do that. All right. Thank you very much for that. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstentions?
Same.
I'm just, moving forward with item 6. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolve the power, that the power purchase agreement between the Town of Fairfield and Green Skies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Senior Center at 100 Mona Terrace, for the sole benefit of the Senior Center, and the term of the agreement being 20 years be and hereby is approved. May I have a second? May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a clarifying question for Mr. Lester. So there, Skyview and Green Skies, last time those contracts were, had differences, now...
Same con, same contract.
There may be a paragraph or two difference in description, you know, of how they're going to deal with the roof, but it's the same contract.
Yeah. We've negotiated, there won't be any, one of them had bad provisions, those are gone.
Okay.
And I don't know what, I mean, these are all the same resolutions. You could do them all.
We'll use this guideline going forward, so we don't have to do it again.
That's great.
If I can pick up something from NRL, I'd like to.
Mr. Cully?
I move to amend item 6, to add the language, "And to grant the appropriate access," after the words "Senior Center."
And would your motion also include removing the word "sole" before "benefit"? Before benefit?
It would. Thank you. And to remove the word "sole" for the word "benefit."
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Any comment from the public on the amendment? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion before us says amended. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Onto item seven. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and Skyview Solar for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system at the Postal Recreation Center parking lot at 75 Millplain Road for the sole benefit of the Postal Recreation Center, the term of the agreement being 20 years, be and hereby is approved. May I have a sec? Motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. Kylie?
I move to amend item seven, to remove the word "sole" before the word "benefit," and to add the language "and" to grant the appropriate access after the words "recreation center."
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any discussion from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion stands before us as amended. Any further discussion on the motion? Any comment from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Item eight, assuming there's no way faster to do this, we're just going through these. But we've got to amend. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and Skyview Solar for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of Operation Hope at 50 Nickel Street for the sole benefit of Operation Hope, and the term of the agreement being 20 years, be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second? Any discussion?
Yes. I move to amend item eight, to remove the word "sole" before the word "benefit," and to add the words "and" to grant the appropriate access after the words "Operation Hope."
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item stands before us as amended. Mr. Bowman, could you tell me how this is going to work with the microgrid system? Because isn't that providing?
This will be part of it, yeah. This, this will be one of the sources of power when UI power goes out. These three buildings will be interconnected. So UI power goes out, our existing generator on the roof will continue to operate, and the two PVs from Operation Hope and Firehouse will continue to operate. So we'll only be using the emergency generator for a smaller portion of the power needed.
Okay. So this basically supplements what we're doing with the microgrid.
Right.
Can either one alone power the Operation Hope?
No. Their rooftops are too small to provide enough power for either building. Both the Firehouse and Operation Hope can only provide a portion of that power.
Okay. So in terms of the microgrid, this is basically supplementing the photovoltaic part. If that all goes out, the generator?
Right. There's, well, there's four pieces. Emergency generator, the 24-hour generator, and the two PVs. So it goes to the greenest first. The two PVs would come first. The generator on the roof, which runs on natural gas, would come second. That runs 24/7.
Is that the tri-generation system we installed?
Yes. It provides heat, air conditioning, and hot water also. And the emergency generator that we're going to install there, which also run on natural gas, would then just run to provide the balance of power during the shutdown.
Okay. Any further comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
You know what? I accidentally voted yes for that. Getting tired.
Let me continue. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Oh, God.
All right.
I was thinking it might be time for a response.
Next up, item nine. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and Skyview Solar for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Fairfield Theater Company at 70 Sanford Street for the sole benefit of the town of Fairfield, the term and agreement, and the term of the agreement being 20 years, be and hereby is approved. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. This might be the one where "sole" is okay, because it's very town of Fairfield, I guess.
Yep.
At the moment, we're providing the power to that. But again, future things being what they are, given this is going out, we should probably remove the word "sole" as well, just to be safe.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that? You want me to?
Sure. I'll do it.
All right.
I move to amend item nine, to remove the word "sole" before the word "benefit," and to add the words "and" to grant the appropriate access after the words "town of Fairfield."
Do you want to do it there or at the after Fairfield Theater Company?
Oh, town of Fairfield.
Or 70 Sanford Street?
No, it should go after town of Fairfield.
It should?
Yeah, like the other ones. Yeah. The other ones are the same.
Then I'm good.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The item as amended is before us. Any further discussion? Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Your word then.
Item 10. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the power purchase agreement between the town of Fairfield and Skyview Solar for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the fire headquarters at 140 Reef Road for the sole benefit of the fire headquarters, the term of this agreement being 20 years, be and hereby is approved. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
I move to amend item 10, to remove the word "sole" before the word "benefit," and to add the words "and" to grant the appropriate access, access after the words "fire headquarters."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any further discussion on the amendment? Any comments from the public on the amendment? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The item stands before us as amended. As, Mr. Bowman, again, since this is going on the roof of the fire headquarters, we've just put in a microgrid system, could you step us through how this interacts with a microgrid system?
Exactly. When UI power goes off, this power will continue to run in conjunction with the generator on the rooftop of the police station. And only the amount of power required to supplement that would be done by the emergency generator the time that UI power is not service. So we already programmed it into the microgrid, so they knew that was coming. The other interesting thing on this one is the vendor agreed to do is he did not win the bid on this. But because he won three others, he agreed to do it even without winning the bid, the same price.
Wow.
And he said he can, over the next five years, he'll keep bidding. Maybe he'll get one. He's agreed to do that without actually winning the ZREC bid, which is pretty good.
Good. I mean, Mr. Bowman, once you just referenced this, there have been a number of state initiatives where the state has made available different funding and different subsidies to help support this, and this move to sustainability and alternative fuels. We've been fortunate enough to win six. I know you've been involved in other bids. We've lost some, and you plan on continuing that initiative.
Absolutely. And as well as the original metering, which is coming up. Which, by the way, they have me on the state team to discuss how that's going to work. So we'll know exactly how it's going to work in the beginning.
Okay, good. And again, you did the same thing on the microgrid program, and we're one of the first in the state to have that. And you were instrumental in helping them edit their regulations for the microgrid program into something that was actually workable at the town level.
Exactly.
So thank you for that. Any further discussion from the board on the item before us as amended? Any comments from the public on the item before us as amended? All right. Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Fantastic.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bowman, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry?
Quick recess before we do anything.
Yep. Can we take a quick recess for five minutes?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
We can reconvene. The next item up on our agenda is item 11, to approve a charge for the Penfield Building Committee. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. The items before us, I believe there was a draft in your packets. I've got a couple of thoughts. I suspect you all do also. Any preference in terms of how we proceed on this?
I think it'd be great if you shared.
Okay.
That's good. Your thoughts?
Basically, I'm looking at this, and one of my goals was to, in terms of what we learned over time about building committee charges, both to have this cover appropriate guidelines, but not go in too much detail and hand tie the building committee in terms of what options they may explore or what things may come up. And so I wanted to look at this and, as a start, in paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, it says, "The PVC or Penfield Building Committee shall retain a construction manager slash owner's representative to facilitate and accomplish the repair of the pavilion." I was just going to suggest we change that to the word "may." Based on the complexity and duration of what's eventually decided, that may be appropriate to do or may be able to be handled with help from BPW. Penfield Pavilion, there's the next paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth paragraph. That goes in, "Penfield Pavilion is located in a flood zone, therefore improvements to building exceeding 50% of value. Building must meet current codes regarding elevation." Proposed deleting all of that. I believe that's covered in paragraph 2, which says, "The Penfield Building Committee shall be guided by engineer analysis, coastal engineers report, geotechnical report, FEMA standards and guidelines, flood mitigation plan, technical reports, comments from the public, including public meetings and neighborhood concerns." And certainly, they'd have to meet all building codes and getting appropriate permits from the town. So I think that paragraph's a bit redundant.
That's fair.
In what's taking place.
Mm-hmm.
And then moving down to, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, paragraph 7, and I'm counting the deleted paragraph as five.
Right.
Paragraph 7. "The PVC shall consist of not less than seven, not more than 11 members. The committee shall meet monthly." And in response to some of the comments in our last meeting, I was going to change, propose changing that wording to "as frequently as needed to move the project forward on a timely basis. Shall maintain minutes and an orderly record and shall comply with town and state statutes and regulations." And then on the second page, there were a series of items that we had pulled off of prior building committee boards, so they're a little bit different. The ongoing cost of maintenance operation seems fine. Incorporating green initiatives, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
To, again, moving on to item 4, how to maximize the opportunity for insurance/fEMA reimbursements and ensure timely processing of all reimbursement paperwork requirements. Just changing it from state reimbursement, which is kind of school building oriented, to insurance and FEMA focused. And lastly, add a following point. Consider and integrate any flood mitigation measures or design components into the overall plan as appropriate. And again, trying to encourage the building committee to take into account any flooding in the neighborhood behind Penfield, and anything that'd be done as part of this project to help mitigate that would be beneficial.
May I follow up?
Sure.
I, I like a lot of those changes. In the paragraphs that says the number of building committee members, can we just say "at least monthly" rather than, or you want to actually use the language more specific that actually says we want to keep the project moving forward?
I guess what, based on the conversation we had last month, as I remember, the concern was making sure we're moving forward quickly. I think that at some point, monthly may be fine, but I think maybe to getting it started initially, it might take more than that. And I think that we want to let them know, expectations are that it's both okay and potentially necessary to be more than monthly to kick things out.
Agreed.
I like the language that Mr. Tetral proposed, that kind of, you know, takes it away from monthly and puts the idea that we're trying to move ahead quickly, or as quickly as reasonably possible.
And I think that's the balance. The idea is to move forward, but the idea is not to move forward without considering all the aspects of this, both the structure, the insurance reimbursement, and any improvements we can make to flood mitigation. So.
I'm supportive of the language. I was just trying to be more compact with words, but we did, I think we all talked about that last time, so I.
I think we're going to the same place.
Yep. I'm good with that language as well.
Yeah. I'm good with all five changes that you have proposed. I think they capture the spirit of, you know, the project and our conversations and our last couple of meetings where we've talked about this. So, thank you.
I do. Do we want to discuss other changes? Do we want to vote these amendments in as they stand now, so we're talking about something as amended?
I think that's fine.
It's fine. I have some other thoughts, too, but I, it makes, I wouldn't be opposed to amending, and then we can move forward as.
So I'll move that we make those changes to the charge. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on those amendments and those amendments only? Any comments from the public on those amendments and those amendments only? All right. Back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the amendments?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the item before us is as amended. Jen, did you get those wording changes?
I didn't get the new bullet on page 2. Can you please restate that?
Consider and integrate any flood mitigation measures or design components into the overall Any further comments or discussion from the board? The goal was to provide guidance without being overly restrictive or micromanaging the committee itself. Okay? Okay to go to the public?
Mm-hmm.
Are we for the amendments? I apologize. I mean, did we vote on the amendments yet? Are you?
We did.
We did, okay.
The first five.
The item before us as amended, and it's back to the board for any further discussion or suggestions.
I do have further discussion, and you can see I'm getting a little fatigued. My apologies. I, a couple of things. I'm grateful to the folks who provided some feedback as well. There were some members of the public, and I also had a couple of thoughts of my own. I agree with the general idea of not wanting to hamstring, you know, the committee and be too specific, and yet, as we discussed last time, and I think that this document, thank you for those who put it together, really reflected a lot of what we discussed last time. One of the things that I looked at in some of the other charges was that we have named kind of designees, so to speak. And I wondered if, and we also have put in language about liaisons from the Board of Finance and RTM in some other charges that we've had in the past. And I wondered about the following, adding at the end of the first sentence in the paragraph about the number of members, after 11 members, potentially adding, including if we so desire. I'm throwing these out there. A member of the Parks and Rec, a member of TFC. It's just a thought. I'm not making an amendment. It's really kind of wanting to talk about that, as well as potentially putting in liaisons.
The, I have two things. One, any of the members of those boards, including the Board of Finance, can be a member of this committee. Since this is a temporary committee, a member of the RTM, a member of the Board of Finance, potentially a member of the Board of Selectment could choose to be on this. So that would be the, I'm not opposed to it certainly, but it's just, they actually have the ability to be on as a full member. And I just, and I, I'm not sure the last time we did something like that and why we stopped doing it.
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't know either. I, this is a few years back.
I was going to say, I'd have to go back because I don't remember.
Yeah. So it just, it just occurred to me. I'm, again, I'm just bringing it forward for some conversation, just because it's an interesting thought when thinking about Parks and Rec, for example, or in the past with projects, we've often encouraged a member of TFC. I don't know, and that, in a sense, could tie our hands as we look at the pool of applicants, so to speak, of all those who have said they'd be willing to volunteer generously their time.
And I also think it's, to some degree, unfair to, if you're talking about liaisons and giving the ability to be that, that's fine because that's kind of optional, and as folks have time or willing to make the commitment, they can do that.
Right.
I think if we make that as a requirement for the makeup, that really puts it on fair burden on some of the volunteers, saying, "You not only have to do the TFC, you have to do this also."
Mm-hmm.
Now, that being said, you know, certainly, TFC members are welcome on this, as with other building committees, and we've occasionally had difficulty. And again, TFC members put in their time, so I don't mean to, they put in a lot of time on this. We have issues, certainly members of the RTM having a past indicated interest in serving on building committees.
Right.
And sometimes that's worked, and sometimes that's been difficult for members to commit, that additional time, because of all the time they put in serving on the RTM.
Right.
So, to the extent that we want to identify potential liaisons, that's great, certainly, and Parks and Rec would certainly be one of those. I think we've got some interest in a, certainly some former members of the Parks and Rec that have submitted their interest in being on the committee directly, so there should be a close working relationship as well, there should be with the Parks and Rec Commission as it stands today, and I would expect that some of the updates from this committee would be going back to Parks and Rec to keep them fully appraised of the status, the progress, and any decisions that are made, as much as they will also this board.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd expect this board and Parks and Rec to be kept up to date as we go through this process.
Mm-hmm.
So if, do you want to make a motion to-
No, I think-
Include those liaisons, or?
Um, I don't know if I, well, here's, here's the issue. I think you're right in terms of committee membership and having a vote at the table. I think one of the things that's been helpful in some of the committees is when there have been, for example, I can think about the Stratfield Building Committee, and there was a Board of Education liaison who was able to speak as part of the body. And so that's more, that was probably more of what prompted my comments, that, in other words, if the charge formally stipulates that whoever it is, you know, be, is able to serve as a liaison, generally speaking, they are then able to have a different type of conversation with the body. I'm, I don't have strong feelings about the issue. I was interested in hearing what the two of you had to say, and if you felt that it was of value. I do think that all the town bodies will remain involved in this, all the appropriate town bodies will remain involved in this discussion, and I don't know that we need to formalize it in that way, but wanted to raise that.
I don't think formalizing it hurts in any way. I think informally, just to make sure you're both aware and/or remember, a Board of Ed member came up to be a liaison to the Riverfield Building Committee, and we both encouraged that and kind of confirmed they could get a seat at the table, if you will, and be fully participating in the discussion.
Sure.
After the fact, a member from the RTM came up to be a liaison to the Riverfield Building Committee from that body.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's definitely appropriate to encourage the building committee to incorporate representatives from those bodies in their discussions. And I certainly don't think it hurts to formalize that, but I just, so we're clear, informally, we've also been working along those lines, too, so.
Right. Yeah. I mean, if you feel the need to formalize it, then okay, but history will show that any committee that we've ever formed in this town has been receptive to members acting as liaisons, as are appointed by the Rome Boards to come and act and have a seat at the table and be part of the process. And each board, the way I'm reading the current charge is it allows for any board to create a liaison, or for any of those board members to actually be a member, should they be one of the-
Should they be considered one of the 11 and be voted on by this?
Right.
I probably did misspeak a bit when I said members of this board could be liaisons. Technically, we're ex officio members of this committee, so we're non-voting members right from the start, so the three of us-
Right.
Are part of any discussions that can take place that we choose to participate in.
Right. So, either way you want to play it, it's fine. I don't know that we need to formalize it, and history shows that anyone who comes, whether it's in an official, ex officio capacity, or just an elected official, they're always, you know, welcomed, as is their input and the communication between their board or their body and the building committee, so that's my thought.
And I think just having this conversation helps to reiterate that. I don't know that I need to-
That's a great idea.
To make the amendment. I think when I, you know, I was just thinking about the group itself and thinking about technical expertise, town perspective. Also, I know this goes without saying, but I think this is going to be a group that really is going to be one that has to really work well together and be able to communicate very effectively with one another. There's, there's a lot to talk about here, and there, there's a lot of passion around this project, and so I think that those were some of my considerations. I'm not going to make an amendment on that particular item at this point. And the other, a couple other comments that came in that, again, I wanted to discuss in context. I, I don't have language for an amendment at this point, but wanted to bring to the Acoustics were mentioned, and I, and specifically, I think there was some feedback that was very specific in terms of ideas. I, again, want to appreciate your comments, Mr. Tetra, about keeping things broad enough so that we're allowing the committee to retain, you know, the professionals they need to. And I think, to that end, in terms of the acoustics piece, which was kind of a conversation at one point, we don't know where that's going to go in the future, in terms of what's happening. My understanding is that any appropriate design professionals, and we've just named some examples here, it's not necessarily an exhaustive list. But one of the questions I had as I reread the charge was the process, and I think that the expectation is, is that this group, as we discussed last time, the phase one of their project is going to be assess and recommend, and with the understanding that then, in their recommendation, that they would be coming forward with a funding request at that point in time. And that's my, that's, I'm getting stuck a little bit there because when we have a group to the point of coming before us with a funding request, what we found in the past with school projects is, you know, there's been a lot of conversation, and not to say that we can't go back, but time is an issue that we're, we've talked about a lot here. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can build in a check-in and/or if we need to be responsible as a board to check in with them, as opposed to them coming to us, to make sure that we don't get to the point of funding requests. And, you know, the three of us sitting here as the first board hearing that are all clearly going to say, "No way" to that option. So that's my only concern, particularly in light of the insurance, the outstanding insurance question, and the fact that the whole 50% issue, and we don't, there are different options. And as we sit here today, we, we don't know which road is going to need to be taken, given that 50% piece, so I don't know if anyone else had that concern, or if we're okay with-
Let's, let's just identify where we are and see where that fits. Right now, there's been approximately $1 million approved for this project. That happened last January, late January, at the RTM meeting for the non-recurring budget that was passed that incorporated the $5 million overall.
Mm-hmm.
So in essence, they have, and that's what's been spent up until now on some of the engineers, so that provides the seat cap, if you will, one of the steps we sometimes go through with school projects.
Right.
What I hear you saying is that what we want to do is encourage the building committee to get to resolve the status of the rebuild in terms of what happened, so as quickly as possible, we can get something back before the boards. And I also, and maybe, maybe I'm reading into what you're saying, but that that be as cost-effective and possible in terms of reas, try not to put too many words in the building committee's mouth here. What I'm looking at is your reference to acoustical. Since those items weren't part of the structure before, if it's chosen to rebuild this-
Right.
That additional money would be new money funded by the town. It wouldn't be covered by FEMA or insurance. In addition, Parks and Rec, prior to Storm Sandy, had an initiative underway to look at the acoustics, so some of those things are covered-
Right.
-in separate initiatives that may not be, we may not choose to cover within this project.
Mm-hmm.
I think that if, we need to get to a decision as to what we want to do with this, and then look at the options and proceed with this as timely as possible from here. So I guess I'm, on one hand, from my personal perspective, I want it to be a very cost-effective approach, and I'd like to see it all done for the $500,000 net to the town. I'm not quite sure how to word all that-
Right.
...in the resolution beyond what we have, to say that, unless we put something in referencing, "We want it to be the most cost-effective option," or that we strongly recommend, or that the committee strongly consider the most cost-effective option, as their recommendation.
That's not my only part of the concern, though. Actually, there, I was not able to be at the, at the public hearing session, and, you know, I understand that there were a number of different comments. They ranged, you know, there was a range, but I think there were a number of folks who expressed a desire to drastically simplify-
Mm-hmm.
Would be a way to say, to shrink the size of the pavilion, a number of conversations in that respect as well. So, again, we, we haven't had that kind of conversation at this table. This body doesn't have a sense of where we stand in terms of those pieces. So on the flip side, you've got, on one hand, a committee saying, "We would like to do a, a project that is very costly and expensive," and on the other hand, you might have a committee come back and say, "We'd like to do this." And that's my, I think that's, either way, I think you were representing one side, and I'm just offering that there's a range and a spectrum. And how do we communicate?
Well, I think that we communicate that, and again, we could have that discussion here, and then theoretically agree, or-
We don't have all the information.
And then theoretically send out on our memo, or realize that we're ex officio members, and we can attend the meeting and participate in the discussion as it takes place, and have our input at the table as that takes place. Or we could do a combination of the two. So it seems to me if we're going to have the building committee, we should have those discussions at their meetings in their sessions.
Right. And I think that's the point, that's part of how this generated, is that we certainly could have done all the work here at this table, but that probably wouldn't be time-efficient, given that we're, we have a lot of other business to attend to, and here, we're here at this point. So I certainly, we do, we do have that option, but, yeah. I don't, again, I don't have-
Any thoughts on how to incorporate that, or-
I don't have language on that, nor am I convinced that we need language, but again, wanted to kind of raise that as a point of discussion, so.
Potentially, on that point, is part of the process. What we might choose to do, because we made these changes, we're kind of living with this, we can get this out to the public, get some feedback from them, that we basically postpone final decision on this until our next meeting. And then, if there's any changes we want to incorporate after we've lived with this for two weeks, we can. If not, we can vote on it at that meeting and also start nominating people to serve on the building committee at that meeting. As a proposal on how to proceed. Any thoughts from the board?
Well, there's a lot of good thoughts there about what we can and can't do, or what we think they should be doing as a committee, and I, I agree with many of them. I'm a little concerned about getting in the weeds on any particular topic, whether it's acoustics, or size, shape, design, placement, or anything like that, because I think that's, you know-
Yep.
-just not our place, at least at this point, because we have nothing to react to, and I don't feel comfortable either, you know, opining on that, or including language in here that would, you know, direct, or, or, you know, tell the committee what they should be doing. So I think they're all good thoughts. I believe the way it's written allows them the flexibility to do their work and to come, to come back to us, or we can connect with them or communicate with them, and our thoughts on, you know, the appropriate level of funding that we should be looking at, or the appropriate type of building that starts to make sense as we get into the process that nobody knows today.
Right.
So I'm, I'm more inclined to leave it a little bit open-ended, at least now, and try to move the process along. And, you know, if there's any language changes that we think we need to make tonight, make them, but get this voted on so that we can move ahead and have this, you know, completed so that our next phase can be actually appointing members to work on this committee, rather than continue to work on the charge itself.
Yeah. I think that the thought that I had was basically to allow for public comment on this, or feedback either as we think about it, or as different members of the residents come up and talk to us about that.
Okay.
We can vote on it tonight, we can put it back on the agenda, so we could potentially edit it if we have to.
Okay.
But the idea is that, I think we've covered all the major issues, but just to get us comfortable with it, I just, I'm comfortable with changing something and voting on it the same night-
And not putting it back.
-and not getting out to the public and, "Hey, here's what we're really thinking about." We published a draft.
Okay.
They, the public didn't know how much we're going to change this or not. Now they'd know. The building committee or prospects still get to look at it, so it's, we're giving them information.
Mm-hmm.
And we're saying that, if not formally, informally, my intent would be to approve it as it stands, subject to any feedback we get during the week.
Okay.
If we missed something, we left something out for something we need to address, we can do that.
Okay.
We can do that by voting on it and just bringing it back for review and approval.
Mm-hmm.
Or we can do that by leaving it open and doing the voting then. We do it before we, and we can appoint the committee members at the same meeting, so we're not slowing up the overall process at all.
Okay.
If that makes sense to the board.
I, I think that's fair, and I can be agreeable to that. There is one other thing I wanted to add to this when we get through this topic, and then I'm, then I'm pretty good.
To the, the charge?
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure if it's a charge, or just kind of a conversation that we should have around it. It is, you know, there's going to be seven, nine, or 11 members on this committee, and it's a unique body. It's a body that we've never, that I've never been a part of before, as far as the investigative work and the building work, so they have a lot of work to do. So I would be, is there a way we can find some money in one of the budgets from the First Selectment's office, so that we can appoint them a recording secretary, so that one of those nine members doesn't have to be the volunteer secretary? Do you know, so, so that that's one less thing for them to worry about, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. I believe that's taken care of at the building department, or building-
Will it be?
Budget?
Okay.
I'll confirm that that's how it is, but that's my understanding in the past where that's happened from.
Oh, it is? Okay.
For boards and commissions, it's out of a separate budget in the operating budget.
Oh, is that, okay.
But for capital projects, it's out of the administrative costs for the capital project.
That's great.
But we can confirm that.
I just want to make sure that we, that we gave them that resource, because they have enough to do without somebody having to worry about paying attention and taking minutes and publishing minutes and things like that.
Most definitely.
Good.
I think that's an excellent, excellent thought, and thank you.
Take it on Mike's budget.
Yeah. I, I don't know about that, actually. I think that one got cut a little bit.
That's life support as it stands.
Yeah. I, I actually, I just want to follow up on Selectman Kylie's comments, because I do, I think it is, I'm glad that we had some conversation- think it is, I'm glad that we had some conversation. And I agree with you. I don't want to get into the weeds either. And I think we don't have enough, there's, we're still learning a lot here, unfortunately and fortunately. But I actually think that the changes that were proposed tonight, one, we did get public feedback. I think that all three of us received some emails.
Mm-hmm.
And that the changes are not significant. I think that we, I think we could vote on this tonight. And as you said, if then there is, if there are 20 emails that come in that seem significant, it certainly can be amended. But I, I'm ready to vote on this tonight if, and I mean, we can, the only thought I had about postponing it as a vote is we, just with the committee, I don't know what other business there is, but just looking at workload and balancing, I'm, and I'm, personally, I'm ready to support this tonight.
Any thoughts, Mr. Kelly?
I'm prepared to support it as well. I guess my one question would be of Robert's rules question. If we do make amendments and approve this, if we do want, or if we do receive additional commentary from either town departments or the public and we want to amend it once again, how would we, should we just put it back on the item, should we just put it back on next week's item as amended so that we could change it? Or would we leave it in its current form and make the amendments at that particular time? That's my.
If we don't vote on it tonight, it's easy. We just postpone it and we have full range. Everybody's comfortable with that.
Yeah.
If we do vote on it tonight, I would suggest we treat it as we did the charge for the Osborne Hill windows or the Ludlow windows, where we approved one charge and then we came back and expanded to include the PCBs where the, I think it was Osborne Hill we did that, where we expanded to include the PCB and the expanded mitigation there.
Okay.
So I think we can do either one.
Okay.
We've done it in the past.
Okay.
So again, and I'm comfortable with either approach.
Yeah. That makes sense because, I mean, I'm prepared to vote and would like to vote and would like for the public to get the message that we're pushing this forward.
Mm-hmm.
And if we want to leave the option open to amend it one more time or add to it, that's fantastic.
Okay.
And along those lines, the charge, I guess, not that I'm suggesting that we do that, but as we, as we go through the process, wouldn't this group have the opportunity at a further point in time if the need arose to amend, as with Osborne Hill? I'm not talking about just at the next meeting, but that's the role of this body is to approve the charge. We want that group to be able to know what they're getting into ahead of time. But clearly, if circumstances change.
Yeah.
We may have to have a different conversation here and we certainly would have the ability then to.
Correct.
Make amendments, so.
All right, so I'm getting a sense of the body. We'd like to vote on this?
Yes.
Any further discussion before we do that? Any comments from the public on the charge as amended before us? If you would.
Thank you. Kenley, 71 Rota Avenue, also the RTM, one of the RTM reps from District 10. Had a year to think about this, so I have just a couple of quick ones. As a member of the RTM, I would just make the comment that I'm sure they want, at the very least, to be informed, to kept in the loop. We are going to, at some point, whether I'm one of those people, at some point or another, there's going to be a vote on some allocations of money. And much better to have them involved in the beginning than to have to start over at the end. Whether you decide to formalize that, whether, I never considered the possibility of putting an RTM member on that committee because I thought there's a potential conflict of interest there between being the person that creates the request and then voting on a request. So I don't know, you know, how that all plays out. But allowing the RTM to have a voice, I think, would be not a terrible idea and certainly might make them happier because it's something that is somewhat controversial. The second thing, as a resident and as a member of this district, I did attend that meeting. And there are a lot of people who are there who are concerned. Some of them feel that perhaps the original construction contributed to the fact that there were a million gallons of water in our streets. I'm not sure that I, I'm not smart enough to know whether that's true or not. But they are concerned and hopefully, I don't know if the mitigation issues are going to be wrapped into Penfield or whether it's separate, but I, if it's not separate, I hope that we do kind of keep that in mind because there are a lot of concerns for people that live there. It's, this was a very traumatic event for us. Another thing is, and you touched on it, is noise. It is a concern. I mean, I totally think that it's unreasonable for a small group of people to claim the beach and own it. I mean, it's a very big town and a lot of people in other parts of the town use it. So I do think that it's certainly something that we've invested a lot of money in and, you know, not everybody can walk home and make a sandwich. But on the other hand, a lot of people were there before Penfield was there. It's not like moving next to an airport and asking them to move the airport. It was, you know, for a long time, simply a beach. And so it's been a change in that neighborhood with the amount of activity for the pavilion. So I'd just like to, you know, just kind of put that out there that maybe they can consider, you know, the effect upon the neighborhood while they're considering it. I'm not saying that I don't support this. I'm just saying that it would be, it would be good for the people in our neighborhood to feel that way, that they were, you know, involved. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Go ahead.
Lynda Crowley, 112 Lally Boulevard. I live two blocks away from Penfield Beach and I was one of the standing members for the last 13 years on the Penfield Building Committee. I also want to mention that the Penfield Pavilion itself was 100 years old before it went down. So you're talking way back, a few generations, before anyone saw only beach. The idea that the pavilion itself contributed to this storm is absolutely a myth, basically, because it did prevent the water from coming across even faster than it did because it acted as a battlefield. By not having it there, there is a depression in that section and the water would have come over faster and it would have come over up to the post-road even more so than it did. So bottom line is, the feelings of how the Penfield Pavilion will be built at this point enter into the fact that we have now newer residents, we have people now that have newer homes, we have a mixture of now how the water comes up because as the newer homes are raised, that allows more water to be infiltrated to the older homes that are not raised. So there are different issues there. The issue at hand, basically, is the Penfield Pavilion itself. It needs to be addressed properly and fairly. And those meetings are open to the public. So anyone that's an RTM member or on any other committee is welcome to come. They also can report back when they have their meetings. The TFC, at some point, was a member of our Penfield Building Committee as were RTM members, but because of the amount of work the RTM does, they themselves withdrew from the building committee because of the charge affected to them and the amount of time that you had to do this work. So in Parks and Rec, usually two or three members from the commission were also on the board, you know, the PBC. So you have, in a sense, once you make your selection, a true cross generation of the beach area and the interested public. And to move forward in a safe and timely manner, we need to concentrate on the charge itself, to move it forward, to get it approved, and then everyone else will have the proper information.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, then back to the board. Any further discussion here?
I, I just want to reiterate that we do have, the flood mitigation plan and the neighborhood concerns are both clear language in the charge, and I appreciate those comments. And I also just want to add, and we've said this before here, appreciate the work of the previous committee and the time that was invested in, in the project. And I'm grateful to the work that they did as well.
Any further comments?
No.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have a charge. And Jen, if you could just make a note to put this on the next agenda for kind of review and approval.
Okay.
Before we do any nominating for the committee itself.
Okay.
All right. And then, and also, let's see if we can get this charge up on the website so it's visible to everybody there. All right. And next up, the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended. Do we have an amount?
I'll make an amendment.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I move to amend by adding, replacing the period with a comma and adding $6,982.65.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? The amendment only? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The item as amended stands before us. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Done. All right. Next up, we have a motion from the town attorney for private executive session. We'll need to turn off the mics and ask anyone not invited to that session to leave. May I have a motion to go into private executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to come out of private executive session?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are back in public session. There were no motions made and no votes taken in private executive session. However, now that we're back in public session, may I have a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. There are no communications, no new business at this point. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sherry, thank you.